Ready.
Mayor Vanny, I move for approval of the agenda.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None heard, motion carries. Okay, I think we'll start out with our first item, the workshop items. Smoky Point Community Park Phase One Final Acceptance. Amy.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Vanny and members of council. So tonight I have before you the Smoky Point Community Church Phase One Final Acceptance. Did I say, what did I say?
Church.
Oh. Smoky Point Community Park, I'm sorry about that. You know where my brain's at. So you can see the the letter from Rock. So we contracted with Rock to do all the inspections and run our project management. So they signed off, Steve signed off on that. And I'm bringing it to you guys. We don't have any issues with Phase One. Phase Two should be getting done in the next month or so. So we paid everything, paid everything out for $2,431,667.30.
Any questions, Deborah?
I'm just, I've been there quite a few times with my grandkids. So everything has looked like it's running great. It doesn't look like there's been any problems or had to have the workers back to fix anything. Is that true?
As far as I know.
Okay.
I mean, I'm sure MNO and maybe police have some things, but I have not heard of anything.
Yeah, it didn't look like anything major. But, and then just FYI for everybody, because I just kind of talked to the parents while I'm there, of course. Everybody loves it. Loves it.
Nice.
Yeah. And are very, and have said thank you to the council also for it, so.
Thank you. Any other, Heather?
Amy, where did the money for the change orders come from, that 120,000 number? Is there a contingency built into the project or do we have a, that's it? Yeah?
Who's in contingency, yeah?
Alright, thank you.
Thanks.
Any other questions? Okay, Nancy, okay, thank you, Amy.
Thank you.
We will move on to item two, July and August financial report. We'll present that tonight.
Thank you, Mayor. Financial report, you've got a big packet for B, sorry about that, but we have two months' worth plus we included the audit, which is kind of the first thing on the, on the list. Pleased to let you know that we had a clean financial and federal compliance audit for 2024. So Finance did a really good job with that. The auditor will be back sometime next month to do our two-year confidentiality audit. That piece is still yet to be done. So that will start here in October and should be done by the end of November. If you remember, we did, we haven't had an exit conference, a traditional one yet. The auditor sent out an email, or actually Wendy did, from the auditor regarding the the 2024 financial statements. So once they get done with the confidentiality portion of it, then we'll have the traditional exit conference. Next thing just wanted to bring to your attention is there was a legislative bill that kind of came in pretty quietly. It's got good and bad for the city. It adds sales tax to items that weren't previously taxable items. And so there'll be a negative effect in that there are some of these items that we do purchase. So we'll pay sales tax on those that we weren't used to paying sales tax on. The good news is, is so will everybody else. So the city will see some revenue gain from it. We're watching it closely to make sure that, how this affects our 2026 budget.
Do we have any idea how many businesses that fall under this category are within Arlington? That have, you know, business licenses with us?
No, I never, didn't do that much of a research in, in, kind of in general. Sherry and I talked about some of these because web design, software and things are items that a lot of businesses use. And so it, it has an effect, you know, really across the business, you know, to all businesses.
Right.
So, you know, it's, there has not, I have not seen a financial statement for this from the state. Generally, the Office of Financial Management gives us some idea of impacts and stuff. I haven't seen anything on this. Like I said, this one seemed to be kind of quiet.
Sneaky.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
The upcoming events, so just some of the things that'll be on council, we'll talk more about this. We got our retreat coming up in a, in a week and a half. And we'll kind of talk more about those things then. Revenues are pretty much stable. Sales tax has been down, continues to be down. We saw a little bit of a bump up in our August for our June collection. So it's promising. We're not going downhill, but we are maintaining kind of right at minus, you know, 4% less than what we want to see. So year over year, not great, but we're also stable. So it's not, it's not continuing to drop. We'll again, talk about it more at the retreat, but we'll put some things on hold for '26 and be conservative. Well, also for our '25 budget, we're at about 42% of our expenditures right now for the year. So that's a little less than where we should be because the departments are holding back on things a little bit to try to save where we can. So that is showing.
Just thinking of that and thinking of our discussion at the spring retreat about budget and stuff and decisions we've made over the past year. Were those decisions helpful in keeping it so that we are somewhat steady rather than dipping down further?
Yeah, I think so because we're, we're definitely living within our means and it's coming, it's coming out better. One of the things that concerned Kristin and I when we were building the 2025, '26 budget was, was our reserve funds. Because the projections, we looked really close, not on our mandatory reserve fund, but our, our two-month reserve fund. And we're actually doing better on that than we anticipated back then. So our range is, is 10% to 16% of our, of our revenues. And we're at about 15.5 or something. So we're, we're doing really good. We weren't quite, we were kind of worried about being closer to 10% when we were looking at this a year ago. So happy to answer any questions. That's kind of just a brief overview. Like I said, the rest of the funds are in, you know, pretty good shape. Rest of our revenue collections are where we think they should be for the year. Sales tax is the only one that's down a little bit. And we continue to watch that and we'll continue to report on it. And we will, like I said, we'll be making some adjustments for '26 just to be sure until we see, see this turn the corner the rest of the way.
Dan?
I don't have a question on this, but where are we in replacing Kristin?
So we've got, we've got interviews set up for next Monday, the 29th. And so we'll have panel interviews that day. The recruiter is working on the final background checks and things like that. So I'll have those by the time we have the interview panels next week. And so hopefully by our next council meeting, I'll be able to, or maybe even the retreat, give a positive. We're interviewing four.
Any other questions? Thank you, Paul. Okay, we'll move on to our next item, the community engagement quarterly report. Sarah.
I have a video I wanted to show.
Meet Me in Arlington. Nestled in the foothills of the Cascade Mountains on the banks of the Stillie-Wamish River, Arlington is full of small-town charm. It's a place that lives outside the big-city hustle, where life is enjoyed through meaningful experiences. Meeting friends for concerts in the park, buying local produce at the farmer's market, strolling the art trail to the river, and exploring the friendly downtown shops. Discover the heart of our community at meetmeinarlington.com. Meet Me in Arlington.
So, good evening, city council members and mayor. That was a preview of our Seattle Refine program that's going to be airing this week. This is one of the commercials, one of two commercials that'll also be running through the month on Comal. So we were excited about to show you that. Through the report, our next item was Music in the Park concerts are wrapped up. The city sponsored 10 concerts paid for by the LTAC grant. We also had three other concerts by other nonprofits, like the Soccer Club, Street Fair and Art Show. The concerts seem to be very well-attended throughout the whole summer. More people than I think we've ever seen before at the concerts. Recently, we had the Hispanic Heritage Event with Yvonne. And we feel like it was a success. We did a different format in the evening and we had a live band, which was really good. And a dance party after the band. And it was a lot of fun. And National Night Out was also in this quarter. We presented that with the Arlington Police Department, super successful. I think a lot of you were there. This week, we're installing the underground power for an electronic reader board downtown. DAB is helping out with the installation of the power. And we're installing the reader board with the LTAC grant from 2025. So this will be great for our staff because they will no longer have to put up across-street banners. And we can advertise all the events on the reader board in any format we want to. So that's coming soon. We're also in the midst of a new platform for our facilities management online on our website. This platform is very in-depth and we can have league, baseball leagues schedule online and make payment at the same time. And other departments, the park shelters, airport, if they want to use it, as well as any other department that has scheduling facilities. So we're learning that. It's like a two-month process and then uploading all of our information. We applied for and got a PED Tree Power Grant. And Josh is working on me with that. They will be planting October 4th and 5th. Wait, let's see, in October, 4th Street through 5th Street on the Centennial Trail and then 5th Street to Division. So two blocks of trees, additional trees, about 13.
Did all the ones live from last year?
Yes. The crew did an excellent job maintaining the ones over the summer with tree water bags. So they watered them, they're looking great. Yeah.
Beautiful.
Yeah. We're in the midst of the public art projects finishing for the year. We installed a sculpture, Love One Another, through the Calvary Church. The Eagle Trail Howler Merrill was done and by Lori Angdahl. And I think a lot of you attended the dedication. We have a dedication tomorrow for the bicycle mural at Howler that Erica Knaff repainted. The sundial is almost finished. We're holding off on a dedication because we, MNO brought in dirt and soil to berm up to the top of the foundation. So we want the grass to kind of establish before we tromp all over the new concrete. But that will be coming. And then we also have two new wood sculptures for the roundabouts on Division. The Chesa Artist is creating them right now. And Jim Kelly helped review the attachment to the concrete. So we're on our way with that. And we also have the, our application out right now. So if any public members want to apply, they can. But since the budget is reduced, we're going to be limited next year. And I thought we could concentrate on maintenance and also the 211th. There's a spot in the wall for a art project. So that's coming. We just finished up three Eagle Scout projects with the Scouts. One scout built a, a shelter in the dog park down at the Stormwater Park. Another scout installed signs on the Porridge Kruger Creek Loop Trail, which we haven't had. And then the third scout created a Telephone in the Wind project, and that was dedicated last Friday. So we're really proud of all the scouts and their hard work this summer. That was a lot at once, three projects. It's usually one. Yeah, it was great. And we had the dog park grant opening this summer. A lot of you attended that at York Park. And it seems to be working, working well there. And then the two other projects are the Jensen Park restroom. As Public Works has taken on management of that, as well as the pickleball. So we're just waiting, the pickleball should be done pretty soon. We ordered signs, so we'll be happy to have a grant opening on that at some point. Our upcoming projects we're working on, we've already met for hometown holidays to start planning that. It'll be the same format as last year. We have a brand-new youth council, so they'll be working on a project. Not sure what that is yet. We're working with Rotary on a pump track for Jensen Park, just finalizing funding and design currently. Hopefully, spring, summer build. The Arlington Update, October edition, we'll be starting work on that. I already talked about the art. And also we'll be starting to work on the Eagle Festival because it comes right, right away after Christmas. The next section is our PIO Mandy's work that she's done over the last quarter. There was one error in here, it mentions a knife stabbing twice, which there was one that we did a press release on. We've been working with Arlington School District closely on communications for any incidents that are happening there that the public needs to be notified about. Let's see, next page. So these are just kind of stats of what's happening with our communications. Our outreach, the numbers keep going up with subscribers to the newsletters. And then like the Facebook subscriptions have gone up a couple thousand per quarter. You can see our top web pages in the last 90 days. Searches, community events, the airport, police, utility billing, employment, permit applications and bid postings. And then the Agenda Center, which is the council agendas and other meetings. Next page is just a highlight of a social media post on Facebook, which engagements were the highest. So it's just for your information. And you can see on YouTube how many subscribers we have for the videos of the meetings. Next page, our tourism projects. We applied for the 2026 Tourism Grant through the city, and I think we all know that part. And now I'm working on a quote, I got a quote for a brochure and map of all the Arlington parks, which is needed. And so potentially, we could apply for that in 2027. And then we continued to work on the Meet Me in Arlington program. The video that you just saw was a grant from the county. So we also had the Zip Trip come out this summer from Fox 13, which I think you guys saw that too. The pop-up shop is going well. There's a new Friday program, the Fourth Friday, in conjunction with the Chamber. They bring out some vendors and there's live music, trying to get business on Friday nights downtown. Stay Up and Late with DABBA. Let's see. We have our youth council, plus there's a new coalition fairly new by the Stillie Valley Health Connections that the city is part of. And there'll be an event coming up for that. And then Friday Fund Day has started again, Fridays in Legion Park. Last quarter, we had, we recognized two volunteer groups. The Kiwanis Club received the Mayor Volunteer Award. And then we had the Rotary Club working at Howler this summer, quite a lot. So I think I went over the park projects and the art. And the very last page, there's a list of our city-sponsored events and then more fall events that are coming soon that you might be interested in. And then I just added some photos that might be of interest to you. I think that's it.
Any questions? None? Thank you, Sarah.
Yeah, thank you.
I'll just quickly say thank you for letting us know about the artwork in the roundabouts because I was going to ask you that. So that's nice to know. They're looking beautiful, by the way.
Okay, we'll move on to our next item, the Airport Quarterly Report. Marty.
Evening, council members, mayor. So I'm okay. We have been busy. Got to kind of run down some completed projects. The Taxiway Alpha Airport staff pleased to announce that that is done. With the exception of one more coat of paint on the striping that's taking place this week. I had it listed here, it's going to be late September, but it'll be this week. Looks like we have weather. That project began in late April and was finished 19 days ahead of schedule. And reopening on August 21st. Second coat of striping paint, like I mentioned, will be this week. Minimal impact on airport users. The project included a mill and overlay, as well as a reconstruction of taxiway connectors, Alpha 1 and Alpha 4. Those are the ones at the end of the main runway to meet FAA standards. The work was divided into four phases to minimize the impact on airport users during the project. This was one of the most complex projects of its type I've been associated with. And the team did great. We had great contractors on it, really was well-received. Had a lot of complicated things we had to do for our users as far as allowing them to continue to use the airport, get access to fuel and this and that. And our engineering firm, the team we had, did a great job. So, yeah, yay. Next thing, and we, we've been working for the last couple of years removing derelict aircraft from the airport. We've had, every airport has them. And, and we have more than our fair share. We have them in an area so they don't look trashy for people coming by. But we're down to one, so the team has done a wonderful job getting rid of them. And this, that one is leaving this week. And if it doesn't, it's going to be picked up by another guy that happens beyond the airfield and he'll take it away. Hometown Fly-In, this is the first of its kind for, for the, for the airport to sponsor. It was a great success. We had over 55 aircraft that were camping attendees. We had over 145 aviators in attendance. We estimated approximately 500 public visitors for the day. We had, we had music, lots of food and numerous events, displays, booths and vendors. It was really well-received by the airport community and our tenants and users. Community Airport Day, we had multiple vendors, food trucks, events. It says 175 kids flown. We ended up getting that revised and it went down to 150. We had all of our spots booked up, but a bunch of people didn't show up. So we were at the last minute, you know, we had, we could have flown a lot more. We normally fly around 200. So for whatever reason, it's a lot of work and it's, it's a pretty tiring event. So we're discussing possibly breaking that out into a two-day event or a couple of times throughout the year. Fly less each day, don't burn out our volunteers. And, and it's, it's, you know, it's, I think it'd be good to have that. I've done that before at other airports and it works really well. So we're going to look into that. Let me see, we estimated about 1,500 people, public came to that event. It's always well-attended and, and a lot of fun. It's my favorite event of the year that we have. The fiber project update, Phase Three of the fiber installation project, that began on May 27th, expected to be completed here, it says by mid-September. I wrote this a few days ago and I was advised today that that's going to be pushed out to the end of September. So another week and a half or so. This phase will continue the installation of fiber along the east side of the airport. Additional fiber will also be installed on Airport Boulevard in the northwest area of airport property. The project aims to enhance internet service and security for airport tenants and businesses located on the premises. And expanding the fiber network is sort of if you build it, they will come, kind of approach to it. Throughout the airport, will also improve operations for companies that choose to remain or relocate to the Arlington Airport. We, the last phase, we were able to connect the Ultralight Park gate. That one was still not connected with fiber. So with that, we're able to do license plate checks at each gate remotely open and proxy card use for anybody that's using that. So we haven't had that up to now, so we had a keypad, which isn't the most secure way to do that. Let's see, our master plan is ongoing. We're at about the 75 percentile of completion. So we thought we'd be done about April or May of 2026. And I think we might be in a little under that. We did a precursor to this about three years ago and hired a company to come out and kind of get the ball rolling for us. So that's kind of helped speed things up. And there will be a public advisory committee. We have a PAC committee meeting scheduled for October. And on October 8th, we're going to be doing a public meeting as well. So this is our public outreach as it, as it relates to the master plan. It's going really well. Then lastly, the EV charging, charging station. We have that currently in, in permit review, finally. This, this project has been the bane of my existence, this thing's gone on for ever. But we're getting it rolling now and so we should have it up and, and operational pretty soon. I know that Amy's staff is working on it and they're really close. So, yeah, that's about all I got. Any questions?
Any questions, Heather?
Oh, I know she's, yeah, she's. She hasn't had fun with it either, so we're, we're in the same boat.
Marty, I'm encouraged to see, I'm encouraged to see the counts for the new kind of hometown fly-in. I'm curious what your estimate is of the 55 camping attendees. How many were local, like from Arlington, our tenants on the property?
Yeah, yeah, we were trying to figure that out too. And sometimes it's hard to tell because there's planes that you don't see that sometimes they'll drag out. But we saw a lot of people flying in. So I would estimate probably, well, they were camping. So I'm thinking mostly about 65% to 75% of those were from out of the area.
Actually flew in.
Flew in and camped on the spot, yeah.
That's great.
And so the remainder were, and then we, that was just kind of the camping ones. We had display aircraft that were on the ramp as well, too. Most of the locals will come out, you know, bring them out of the hangars and bring them to the display area for them. So, yeah, we're, we're pretty excited about it, so.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Nancy, thank you, Marty.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to the next item, Maintenance and Operation Quarterly Report. Josh.
Good evening, council members and mayor. So July, August and September, three busiest months we have every year for our team. I tried to keep it under 10 pages. I'll make it quick. So I'll put the highlights as our seasonal staff were all filled, all the positions were filled this summer, which was great. We actually had a really successful team and we hoping that a few of the six-month and most of the college students will be returning because they're still in college. So it's great for next year. We're also bringing on two seasonal staff to start October 1st next week. So they'll help us through the Christmas and holiday events this coming fall and winter. For the Department of Corrections work crews, they actually increased their sizing, which was really great for us. They've been showing up more reliable this last three months. And the focus for the DOC crews this quarter has up and down, has been the park vegetation control assisting with the larger projects like we have at York, we're removing some of the cobble rock and also homeless camp cleanups. We had roughly two of those, along with some debris left in different places. For the streets, we completed 100 linear feet of sidewalk repair in the Brickwood neighborhood. We've been working on that project for the last two years with HOA. It's a phased approach of taking out the trees first. HOA took out the trees, we repaired the sidewalks. We'll be focusing next year a little bit more on Brickwood so we can keep going on that one as we go through every year a little bit more. We also repaired 75 linear feet of sidewalk repaired in Old Town Arlington. So that was over by Howler Middle School and also on First Avenue and Hamill Drive. Highlights for streets was we also filled 30 potholes in July. So the heat really rings the asphalt up sometimes. In August, we had 17 potholes were filled and 36 sidewalks repaired. And typically, if it's under two inches of rise, we'll grind it. And if it's over two inches, we'll ramp it and then put on our list for a different focus area for repairs. We removed the whole sidewalk. we remove the whole sidewalk panels. In September, for streets, we worked with our ILA in a local agreement with Somers County, and they completed the repairs that we had noted for Burn and Tweet Road, so thank you for approving that. They'll be coming back in the spring to apply the chip seal. They wanted a wait period so that way the chip seal really sets in versus doing it in a rush. We installed rapid-flashing beacons on Symmetria Road with a new crosswalk for safety, and we had our contractor do the annual thermoplastics and complete 3,000 feet of thermoplastics. For facilities, as you may have seen online, there was a new cooling tent that was deployed out here three times this summer during different heat waves we had. That helped a lot with not having to open up council chambers and have a city staff member here when it was open. And I saw a lot of people actually using it, which is good. For parks in July, the July 4th events and everything that follows could take up more than I could put on all these pages. They were successful. No issues that we knew of, a little few minor improvements we could do for next year, but as always. The fencing was completed at York Park along with the grand opening of the Dog Park, which was, thank you for all that could attend for that. In August, we replaced the safety netting that had holes in it and was aging at Quake Ballfields, and we'll be also replacing some of the netting on the outfield that goes towards the state park. For September, for the parks, the staining and clear coating has been completed again for our Haller splash pad, so it's ready for the '26 season. It's quite expensive, but I think that taking the time to really go through it this time in depth, hopefully it'll hold up for five years. You've already heard about us preparing the Stormwater Roundhouse location for the Sundell project. A lot of dirt was brought in, grass seed put down, and we're excited to see that project can be completed, the art. For the airport, the hometown fly-in was a success. Thank you, Marty. It was great coordinating with their team as always, and we had a great seasonal staff pictured here that really put the effort into, they've been here, I think, three seasons now, both of them, and they put in so much effort to clean up the grounds, and there's so much effort that goes into that, that they really take ownership of it. In August, our Airport Appreciation Day was a success also, and we're able to support the event. Our staff also helped out with the license plate camera readers that were installed at the entry gates with IT, and it's actually helped out a lot with our movement throughout the airport. So it's been a great project. We were actually happy to have that completed. For our stats, we had, so far this year, we've had 487 internal spice works or our program requests throughout internal staff, and mostly 75% of those are completed. Usually, we'll have about 30 in the queue that'll be waiting for parts or for timing for projects. For our citizen online requests, we've had 134 requests as far as department alone this year that we've addressed. We might have a few that are pending or awaiting, but mostly all completed. Any questions?
Any questions?
Just a statement, I want to say your team is awesome to work with.
Well, thank you.
You know, I've had to work with you guys for our alley, but I always say MNO is the unsung heroes of a city. You guys keep it going and looking good all the time, so thank you very much to all of you.
Thank you, I'll pass that on, I appreciate it.
Please do.
Great, thank you, Josh. Paul, do you have any administration reports or anything tonight?
Just want to remind everybody that we've got five Mondays this month, so next week is no council meeting. You got a Monday night off next week, and will be, our next meeting is October 6th, except we have the retreat in between, so.
Yeah.
Don't forget about the retreat. I've got loads of fun lined up for me.
I thought, oh, you had a typo in there about snake.
Oh, really?
Snacks, it was snakes.
No, that was right.
That was, that was the snack.
Keep everybody on their toes. It's unusual that I misspell something.
I know. I was taking bets again on your meeting. Time it ends.
Is there going to be a pool for?
Yeah, that's right.
I'll win if I.
They won't tell you.
Yeah, no.
We should know.
Yeah, the comments I'd like to make tonight is a great big thank you to the MNO staff and the airport staff for all the events, and the Parks Department and all them. I mean, this summer was a great summer of events. I mean, town was packed with a lot of people. I appreciate all the hard work. Thank you.
It shows.
Okay. Do we have any comments or reports from council members tonight? None seen. Okay, at this time, I'd like to open it up if there's anybody from the public that would like to make comments. None seen. Okay, and we will. Consent agenda. What do we do here?
Yeah, we only got one item.
We've got one item, yeah.
You're adding other stuff.
Yeah, I'll find some more stuff for us.
Okay, with that, I think we're ready for adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
Question?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None heard. Meeting adjourned. Thank you all.
Thank you.